Yeah.
Go ahead and make that part of the minutes. Right on punctual.
Ladies and gentlemen, it's six o'clock and I'd like to call, bless you, the April fifteenth, twenty twenty one, meeting of Columbia County Planning and Zoning Order. You'd stand with us. Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation and Commissioner Futch will lead us in the pledge.
Y'all bow with us. Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this time to come here and do the county's business. We ask that you look over us, look over everything that we do. Give us wisdom, guide us, help us to keep this right direction for everyone involved. We ask that you look over everyone here on their way home tonight and give them a safe trip home. All these things in Jesus' name.
Blessings. United States of America. Oh, God. Amen.
Thank you, be seated. If I could please remind you to, uh, to please silence your cellphones. We do have all five commissioners present tonight. Gentlemen, you've had a chance to review the minutes from the April first meeting. If there are no changes or additions, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
To your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve the amendment is submitted, passes five zero. Gentlemen, we've also had a chance to review the agenda. I don't believe we have any additional items we need to, uh, to add at this time, so I need a motion for approval as the agenda's been submitted.
So moved.
To your second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Motion to approve the agenda, passes five zero. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the Planning Commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. The decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on May fourth, twenty twenty one, six P M. in these same chambers. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Kara Harden and she'll give you a request to speak form for their meeting. During tonight's meeting, we'll have two opportunities for the public to address the Commissioners. One will be during our public hearing section where you'll have the opportunity to speak on whatever rezoning issue comes before us tonight. So if you'd like to stand and give us some additional information, either for or against a particular rezoning, please, please raise your hand. We'll ask you to come up to the desk, give us your name and home address, and we'll give you three to five minutes to, uh, to state the information you'd like us to have. I would ask you that, uh, to, to please not get repetitive. If somebody has addressed an issue that you want to try to reinforce, please don't dwell on that and move to some new information for us. Um, that being said, uh, let's move into our first order of business tonight. Uh, Ms. Mystery, file RZ two one zero three zero six.
Yes, sir. This is a plan revision that you first heard on March the eighteenth. Location's forty five oh two Guilford Court and point four acres. Current zoning is P U D and it's residential use and the revision is to reduce setbacks. This is the location in Stratford. Zoning, which is a P U D. And this is an aerial of the, of the property involved. This is a, a plat of the lot and you'll see there that on Elsby, Elsbury Drive, there are, there is a ten-foot strip on both sides of that, uh, road. Uh, this is the subdivision plat. And this is the aerial that shows utilities. So the applicant is looking to build an addition for the back of the house. Um, there are some restrictions on the site with regards to the sewer and the fence that's on the HOA property. Um, at the last meeting, it was, um, table to get the as-built plat. Um, and this, that as-built plat was received this Tuesday. Um, and this is the survey that shows the, uh, fence line, which is here. That's on the HOA strip. And then this red area here is the potential addition to the property that would stay out of the ten-foot, um, uh, easement for the sewer line, but be about ten feet into the back, um, setback here. Um, that is the, um, proposal that the applicant has right now for the, um, plat revision, but all the details of the addition has not been provided yet. Um, and the HOA is also asking for, um, additional information. I got an email this afternoon saying that they were looking for, um, um, some information from the applicant to, um, not hold them liable for anything that happens on that property since that is part of the, the yard. And so for that reason, um, give them time to get all the information. Staff is recommending that we table to May sixth.
This is a continuation of the public hearing from before. So at this point in time, would the applicant like to, to add anything in addition to what Ms. Mystery's given us? Don't have to if you don't want to, but if you do have something, feel free. Okay? If you can get with staff, they'll be glad to do that for you. Okay? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning, even though we've been asked to table it? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table as requested.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table RZ twenty one zero three zero six to May sixth.
To your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to table till May sixth, passes five zero. Ms. Montgomery, we've got an information-only item. File MW two one dash zero four dash zero one.
Yes, sir. This was a minor waiver for the property at nine oh one Rain Court, um, also part of a planned unit development. And this was in regards to a reduction of the front setback was approved on April first. This is the location of the property. It is within the Windmill Plantation pud. And this is the aerial of the site and the plat of the property, which shows the, the forty-foot platted setback. Um, we did note in our approval letter that there is some contention in the, the zoning file about what the setback should be. Um, we did base the minor waiver on the platted setback of forty feet. Uh, this was the site plan. Um, the applicants were proposing in addition to the house and needed about a four-foot encroachment into that forty-foot front setback that is within the ten percent that is approvable with a minor waiver and was approved on April first.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Montgomery, we'll stay with you and we've got a provisional home occupation for K and K Ceramics.
Yes, sir. This is a provisional home occupation at fifteen seventy four Joy Road. Uh, the property is located at the end of Joy Road on the north side of Wrightsville Road. This is the aerial of the site. Uh, you see the, the existing house and the building that would be used for the business sit quite off, quite far off Joy Road. This is the site plan that identifies the, the carport that would be used for the pottery business and for storage of some of the items. Um, this is slightly different from most of these we've seen in that the building itself is not enclosed. It is a, a carport. Um, so there is some potential for visibility of the business activities from the adjacent property. Um, the area along this fence line is currently treed landscaped on the neigh, on the applicant's side and treed on the neighbor's side. So provided the, the existing vegetation remains and is supplemented by the applicant as needed to, to kind of maintain that buffer, um, there shouldn't be any concerns with, with that visibility. Um, it does sit, you know, quite far off Joy Road, so there's no, no real concerns with visibility from the public road. Um, the applicant has indicated that her sales are conducted at trade shows or online and shipped, so there's no additional traffic to this property. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions of staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for K and K Ceramics located at fifteen seventy four Joy Road.
To your second. Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. And we've got a couple preliminary plats tonight. Ms. Montgomery, the first is a preliminary plat for Anderson Farms, section two.
Yes, sir. This is the preliminary plat for section two of Anderson Farms off Lewisville Road. This is the location of the property, uh, currently zoned R one, single-family residential. And this section includes twenty-four single-family lots with a minimum lot size of one point two-two acres. Front setbacks are a minimum of sixty-five feet from the center line and side setbacks are ten feet. Rear setbacks are twenty-five feet in accordance with the R one zoning district. Um, there are buffers provided against the S one property to the north and the R eight property to the east and south. Um, and this section does include three lots marked by the little yellow stars, um, that do require specific approval from Planning Commission. Um, these lots exceed the maximum lot depth allowed in our code, which is five times the width of the lot on at least one aside. Um, it is a fairly minor exceedance of that requirement. Um, and they are larger lots, so the staff doesn't see any concerns with allowing them as, as presented. Um, the applicants were requested to provide a stubout to the adjacent parcel to the east with the concept plan. Um, that was revised by, at Planning Commission to require only the right-of-way to extend to the property line, and that is what we see with this preliminary plat submittal. Um, the road will be paved to the cul-de-sac and then the right-of-way extended to the property line. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff?
Prove the depth. As I all link.
That, that can be part of the.
That's a staff recommendation for approval. Any other questions? I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table. This is not a public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for Anderson Farms, section two, located off Lewisville Road.
To your second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five zero. Montgomery, preliminary plat for River Oaks Phase Two.
Yes, sir. This is the preliminary plat for Phase Two of River Oaks located off Hardy McManus Road, currently zoned R two, single-family residential. And this is the location of this section, um, kind of at the end of River Oaks Lane, existing church to the west. And this preliminary plat includes forty-four residential lots, um, with minimum lot size of ten thousand square feet in accordance with the R two zoning district. Um, setbacks are fifty-five feet from the center line and ten feet from the side and rear property lines. There is a twenty-five-foot undisturbed buffer around the edge of the property and sidewalks and street trees are to be provided on both sides of the road. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? This is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the preliminary plat for River Oaks Phase Two located off Hardy McManus Road.
To your second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Five zero. Ms. Montgomery, we'll stay with you for our first item in public hearing section. File RZ two one zero four zero five.
Yes, sir. This is a request for rezoning from R two, single-family residential to PRD, Planned Residential Development at forty-two oh four Washington Road. This is the location of the site on kind of the southwest side of Washington Road. And currently zoned R two, um, property to the north is zoned apartment residential and that is the existing Saddle Creek apartment complex. Property to the south is zoned, um, for Washington Commons, which is a, a assisted living facility. This is the American Legion to the rear, um, Academy Sports and Mullins Colony across. So there's a, a kind of mix of zoning around this property. This is the aerial of the site. There is an existing house on one property and the remainder of the property is undeveloped. Uh, there are quite significant environmental features with this property, which we'll see in a moment, has affected the site planning. Um, quite a bit of floodplain and floodway related to the, uh, creek running through there. This is the existing site from Washington Road. And the back of the property, which abuts Legion Drive more or less, although, um, Legion Drive is currently a private road, it has no dedicated right-of-way. Um, we'll, we'll see again how that impacts their site plan in a moment. So this was the original development plan we received. Uh, the primary access to the, the new site would be through the existing apartment complex and then the intent would be to develop an expansion of that complex. Um, the applicants recently purchased the existing development and are in the process of upgrading all of the existing units to, um, market-rate luxury apartments and would be intending to develop similar, um, apartments on the, the new piece. And we'll see some examples of their development here in a moment. Uh, with the floodplain and floodway issues, um, they do not have new access out to Washington Roads. This would use the existing entrance onto Washington Road, which already has the, the right turn lane, the center-left turn lane. Uh, due to fire code requirements, they do have to have a second access. Um, though currently they're proposing a gated emergency access out onto Legion Drive. During the staff review, um, Legion Drive was determined to be a private road. Um, there's no record of right-of-way being deeded to the county for this road. Uh, it does appear to be a county-maintained road, um, but we do not appear to own it, so we cannot give them permission to access it. They will need to get that from the affected property owners. Um, they did have their own survey done that did appear to show part of Legion Drive as being public. Um, so we did get a revised site plan from them that shows the access in a, a slightly different location on Legion Drive on a portion that they believe may actually be a public road. Um, that triggers a, a different requirement. This original apartment zoning did have a condition that had no access allowed to Legion Drive, so if they do want to stick with this site plan, you'll have to see this a, a second time for a change of conditions request. Uh, we did, they did provide examples of, uh, the type of apartment homes they would be developing on this property. So this is a example of the elevation of the building. Um, if this is approved, it will be subject to the Evans Town Center overlay district requirements. Um, and this elevation is in, generally in line with those and would, would likely be on, well on its way to meeting those requirements. Um, final review of that would happen during the, the building permitting stage. I also provided examples of the interior of the units, um, the type of, of development they're intending, as well as the new amenity that would be part of the, the project, which would be a, a clubhouse and a new resort pool. Uh, in terms of the future land use map, this property is within the neighborhood's character area on the future land use map, which is intended for a single-family neighborhood development. Um, this property is obviously, their proposal is not in direct keeping with that character area. Um, this property is however also adjacent to the Evans Activity Center, which is a mixed-use activity center, which does envision those concentrated commercial uses, um, mixed-use development, higher-density residential. Um, although it's not currently part of our existing plan, it is part of the revision, um, that is very close to adoption, uh, that includes language allowing rezoning of parcels at the periphery of a character area when the request follows the intent of the plan. Um, with the existing environmental conditions on this property and the access limitations with the floodplain floodway limiting access out to Washington Road, the private condition of Legion Drive, meaning we can't give them permission to access from there, the most logical access to this site is through the existing apartment complex, um, which is a, a limitation for any type of development other than continuation of the, the apartment project. With that consideration, with the existing higher-density developments on both sides of it and with its proximity to Evans Activity Center, um, staff is recommending approval with conditions, uh, requiring a combination plat, removing the maximum front setback requirements for Evans Town Center due to the requirement to get the buildings out of the floodplain on Washington Road. Um, requiring a copy of agreement to access Legion Drive, um, unless we can, we or the applicants can prove that it is a public road, uh, as discussed, there, there's no record, um, with the county that there's a, a dedicated right-of-way. Uh, limiting Legion Drive access for emergency purposes only. Um, it is a twenty-foot wide road, but it is only a twenty-foot wide road. Um, so it is not, not really set up to carry a, a heavy traffic volume. Uh, requiring the change of conditions request for the emergency access if it is to be through the existing apartment development. And then allowing for some minor modification to the site plan, um, requiring it to come back to you for approval. Um, there was noted with the review that there may be some additional state waters on the site, which may impact the final site plan. So this is giving them the ability to make some minor modifications with your final approval and review, um, to address some of those concerns. And then finally, detention funds will have to be located outside of that hundred-year floodplain. And that concludes the staff recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions of staff? I've got one. Actually, I got a bunch, but I, but one right now. Um, let's go back to the overhead where we see Legion Drive. Well, that's, that's fine. You can do that.
Okay.
Okay, so the Grays, I believe, own this property? Would they be one of the owners of Legion Road?
Yes, so if I, let me go back to the, the parcel map. Um, so you can see where the, the parcel line roughly runs right along the outside of Legion Drive. So the Legion Drive appears to be owned by these two property owners primarily.
Do we know for a fact the Grays are not owner of that?
I, I believe that, isn't that the Grays' property?
I'm just wondering if, if, when they, when they transfer title to the property, if the, the potential new owners would be one of the owners of Legion Drive?
The, the.
The property on the corner.
The property of that.
Francis.
Uh, the, the county G I S shows the owner of that property, where the force activity appears as, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Jones or the trustees of. So I'm not.
And he, he passed away and she owns it, so.
Yeah.
Same thing.
So they and the Legion?
Right.
Own the road?
Two properties.
Roads within those two parcels.
And then when it makes the ninety-degree bend, the property under spec there on the back part?
Right. I mean, eventually it gets back onto, onto this property, um, which is at, at this point undeveloped. This is the, the house on that property.
So the Grays have been able to access due to the good nature of two neighbors. They have no ownership in that road.
There's not an existing driveway back there. The house actually comes off Washington Road and has a driveway from there. Um, there is a, a Georgia power easement, so there's some light type of access back there, but that is not where the existing house is accessed from.
So will they lose access if this gets approved?
Georgia power?
Oh, the, the Grays. You said they, they have access from.
They've got access off Washington Road.
Right, but the, the house is included in this rezoning. It wouldn't remain there.
And the apartment would not be allowed to have an access across.
Talking about this one back here. Well, and.
Across Reed Creek.
Yeah, and, and the reason for that is they would have to improve the access from Washington Road. It's currently just a, a single driveway, uh, not, wouldn't meet our county standards. Now you're into the G dot, uh, approval process, driveway separation, things of that nature. And then you can see in this actually a good example, the driveway is currently right about there. G dot would no doubt require it to be aligned with the opposite, uh, driveway at Mullins Crossing, which would be problematic, one, because it's probably not fully on their property and two, again, they're entering into that, this subject property through what would be wetlands. And so that's a whole different, uh, set of circumstances that probably isn't, uh, terribly desirable.
Gentlemen, any other questions? All right, uh, this is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. I know several of y'all probably want to speak, just, you know, decide who wants to come up first. Come on up, give us your name and home address. Thank you. David Hogg, for Eagleton Court.
Uh, I'm associate broker with Maybaum Commercial Properties and representing C L Gray Enterprises in the, uh, proposed sale of, uh, this property to Audubon Communities. Uh, I didn't want to take up, uh, any time, but the Grays simply asked me to make the commission aware that, uh, Audubon has been extremely, uh, easy to work with. They've been, um, uh, very professional. Uh, they've met all of our objectives, uh, and they are certainly in favor of, uh, this project. So, um, we feel good about it. We feel like they're a good addition to, uh, the county and good neighbors. So, uh, with that said, I'm going to turn it over to the Audubon team to, uh, deliver their presentation. Thank you for your time.
Hi, how are you guys? Um, I'm Miles Cunningham with Josh Bowing and, and Max Kimmither, um, here from Atlanta. So we're at Audubon. We're a, um, apartment investment company based in Atlanta. Uh, we own about six thousand units between twenty-five or so properties in the southeast. So you can see most of our concentration is in and around Atlanta. We also have an office down in, uh, but we own Augusta, Greenville, Savannah, Charleston, Raleigh, kind of all focused in, in the southeast. Uh, we're an acquisition, we have in-house acquisition, development, property management, asset management, finance. So we're vertically integrated and our specialty is acquisition and development. And, and this property, uh, really, um, tees up well with that because it is acquisition. We acquired the, the first property, uh, what we call the Belmont. And then we're going to build, hopefully, with your approval and the approval of everyone here, we'll, we'll build a, a second phase. Uh, so we've done this before. We have a property called West Park Club in Athens, um, similar to this. Um, we, we, we built a phase two on that. We built a phase, we bought phase one, which was built in the nineties. Uh, was an attached credit property, which this one currently is, uh, but we built a phase two and brought the whole thing up to, to class A property. Um, I'm going to kind of pass it over to Josh. He's going to go into the specifics of what we're proposing on the site and then I'll step back up and kind of show you how, what we've done with this in the past.
Thanks, Miles. Josh Bowing, uh, three sixty Spindel Court in Atlanta. I'm here to describe the, uh, the property. Ms. Montgomery did a really good job earlier, so I'm not sure I can beat that, but, uh, so, um, Belmont, um, formerly known as Saddle Creek on Washington. Acquired the property in January of this year, uh, for a roughly twenty-nine million dollars. Uh, the, the property was built in two thousand and four as a tax incentive development-type project. A hundred and ninety-two garden-style apartments, um, ninety-six of the hundred and ninety-two are eligible to be released from the tax credit, um, parameters at this point. Um, typical to, to a tax credit deal like this, uh, they have very dated interiors, uh, laminate tops, uh, very basic finishes, white, uh, white appliances, um, basic cabinets, basic flooring. And as you can see, the exteriors are also very dated, um, probably original from two thousand and four. Our original business plan is to invest roughly three and a half million dollars, uh, half of which has already been invested in, in improvements to the site, another two, two or so million over the next twelve to eighteen months. Uh, those improvements include interior upgrades, um, court, uh, granite countertops, um, vinyl plank flooring, uh, upgraded, upgrades to the amenities, grill stations, um, seal and stripe their property, really bring nice new curb appeal, uh, to the property itself. As part of this, we do believe that this phase two will help us to continue to increase, uh, the separation from an, an old dated tax credit property to really a, a top-of-the-line, top-of-market property. So phase two, as you see here on the plan, is, uh, it's on the fifteen and a half acres, two hundred and sixteen units, very similar style construction, um, garden-style apartments, five thousand square feet clubhouse, top-of-the-line clubhouse, new resort-style pool. Um, and, and if approved, we would like to, uh, consider starting construction first quarter of next year. Generally speaking, it'll take twelve to eighteen months, probably eighteen to twenty-four months these days with, with some of the, uh, some of the lead times of materials, but, um, ultimately, it'll be another forty-million-dollar investment, uh, into both properties. Um, the net of that is a synergy that really creates a phase one and a phase two total of four hundred units that is really top-of-the-line, top-of-market, uh, for this, for this asset. So to, to design, um, things that I want to kind of touch on, um, Ms. Montgomery did a great job with it, single access, access point to Washington Road, no additional curb cuts, no G dot, uh, requirements, really eliminates any, um, incident, um, increase, um, risk. Uh, also the floodplain, really limited to this actual parcel. Um, we feel like, you know, our phase two is the best, the highest and best use for, for this particular parcel, just due to the, um, due to the floodway and the floodplain that exist. And I'll turn it back over to Miles. Thank you, guys.
Again, Miles Cunningham. This time I'll give my address, thirty-nine and eighty-five Arden Way. So sorry about that last time. But so what, what I want to touch on is, is kind of our experience in this, in this space. So we have, um, bought a, almost three thousand units of this tax credit conversion. So the way this works, um, and you, you guys probably know a lot about this, but these are fifteen, these are thirty-year tax credits, but they can be brought out in fifteen years. And so we, most of the time in the history of what we've, what we've bought is either the properties that are about to be, go through what's called the qualified contract period, or that in that, in the last three years of that tail. And so this specific property, uh, we bought and it was, it's in there, in the last three years of the tail. So it's halfway through that three-year tail period. So hundred and ninety-two units, originally all of those were tax credit restricted at a rental rate about seven, uh, six hundred and, seven hundred and sixty-nine dollars was the average rental rate when we took over. Uh, and about half of those have been brought out. So we've got, have about a year left, uh, and the, the remaining will be brought to market. Um, at the end of that, the, you know, at, in the, in one year, the, the actual land use restriction, uh, goes away. Uh, so historically, we've done about three thousand of these units across the southeast. Um, we have three things that we believe that, that are required to be successful. A good location, which is what we currently have here with Columbia County and, and the entire area, but, and then specifically this, this, uh, parcel. The product, we make sure to invest appropriately, have the, you know, like Josh mentioned, there's already been two thousand, two million dollars invested in the site and we're going to invest another, you know, million three, million four. Um, and then marketing, we rebrand the property. We're, we're having a fight fifteen, twenty years of kind of history that. We're having to fight fifteen, twenty years of kind of history that has not been the best with maybe higher crime or, you know, just different things that aren't great. So we spend a lot of money rebranding the property, getting out ahead of it and trying to, you know, fight the last fifteen to twenty years in that, do outreach marketing and really let the community know that this is a new property. And then last, we make sure to have the right people, with the right staff on board that have gone through a transition like this. And then specifically the residents. We have very strict requirements for the residents with background checks, high credit scores. You have to have a three-times rent, income to rent. So you have to make three times the rent to qualify for the property. You can't have any bad history. And then last, we make sure to have a safe community. A lot of, you know, a lot of apartments get a bad rap for just being apartments and they leave them alone. We focus on having a community, a community and a neighborhood. You know, we have courtesy officers. So we give reduced or free rent to police officers to live there to help, to be a constant presence at night when they're sleeping, their car's out there and help serve, you know, and just are a nice presence on the property. We install cameras, so get out ahead of it. Cameras on the gate in the property, outside in the amenities. And then if the property doesn't have gates, we will install those as well. A good example of one we've done is Peaks at Gainesville. This is located in Gainesville, Georgia. We bought this, this was built in two thousand. We bought this in two thousand seventeen and we're actually on the market right now, you know, selling it, just mainly because our partner wanted to. But we've invested in this. There was a lot of crime on the site. Great example is we could not, the residents there could not get pizza delivered. So Papa John's, Pizza Hut, all these guys would not come on site. And so we went out of our way, we installed, we put a, you know, a hundred thousand dollar gate out front, a lot of cameras, police officers and had a good presence. So we've owned this for about four years and it's been great. We've really cleaned it up and it's been performing well. When we bought it, it was, rents were seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and today they're about just under thirteen hundred dollars. Next example, which will be the next slide, is Canvas at Savannah. This is a property we bought about a year ago, located in Savannah. We're putting about four point two five million dollars into it. Exteriors, amenities, interiors, same business plan, about the same vintage. And that is in the middle of, that started the three-year tail in December of nineteen. And we have about sixty percent of the units are already through the process and market, currently are market. Last slide here, or last specific example is Arch and Vine. Bought this in Athens, Georgia in January of last year. You can see the dollars we've already spent. This is an example of really the finished level here is what we are currently doing at the Belmont or used to be called Saddle Creek with the granite countertops and whatnot. And so the, that one currently has about fifty-five percent of the units left to be converted to tax credit. So a few more examples here on the next slides. These are just properties we've done. The Metro was an old extended stay hotel in Atlanta. We bought two hundred and twenty-unit extended stay hotel, converted it to two hundred unit multifamily property. American Can is a tax credit conversion. Someone took an old can factory from hundreds of years ago, did a tax credit conversion and in a redevelopment, we bought it from them. And we're actually in the middle of a ten-million-dollar renovation there. Next slide, Four Sales at Vining's, that was built in the nineteen seventies. That's an interior we're pretty proud of. A Reserve at White Oak, that was a tax credit conversion in Baton Rouge that we currently own. There are about sixty units left in that tax credit. That was, that's a six hundred and twenty-four unit property. Long story there, but it was two stories, went through a flood. We bought it, brought all of the downstairs units back online. So just a few examples. And then last, this is before and after of another property down in Louisiana that wasn't tax credit, but just proof that we, just kind of example of what we want to, we like to overspend, do the right thing, put the right community in there and really have a good presence. So, you know, that's kind of us, that's our proposal on what we would like to build as a phase two. And, you know, a few examples of what we've done in the past. Happy to take any questions or?
I know of having conversations with Sheriff Whittle. That location is probably the highest concentration of crime in the county. Have you all had a meeting with him? And if you did, what came out of that conversation?
Yeah, so Josh, do you want to step up? Unfortunately, I was not able to be there, but yes, we did have a meeting with them, Josh and Max.
We did, and we certainly understand the concerns, rightfully so. As Miles kind of elaborated, you know, since taking over the property in January, our focus is safety. No matter who is there, we want them to feel safe. Multiple courtesy officers included, making sure the property is secure with the camera system and a gate system. Rolling, and really what we do also, I don't know if Miles will discuss this, what, soon as we take over a property, we actually make everyone go re-qualify onsite. So they have to re-qualify as far as background checks, criminal background checks, any sort of background checks. So we want to make sure we have the highest possible quality tenant onsite.
Mr. Dempsey, I believe you were in that meeting as well. Can you add some insight to?
I was. And the sheriff has a big concern about, he's excited about these folks taking over simply for the reason they're going to clean it up. And he's been, it's just been a nightmare for his department to try to keep up with the problems that have been going on there. So he's, he's on board with it. He feels like it's going to be a benefit to the county and it's going to solve some problems that have been going on for a long time. And one question I have away from that, obviously you've done your homework. Do you feel like you can rent all this at the increased rate so you wouldn't be doing it? Apparently. So you've done some research and you're ready and you are obviously very happy with that.
Yes, yes, we've done our research and our, you know, our rental rates are already being achieved in the market. You know, Augusta MSA as the whole, I would argue this location is better. Being in this county is the highest quality. So the, you know, the demand is there. I mean, the Augusta, Columbia County, these areas, from an investments, from an outsider looking at this area, this is an incredible market. I mean, with the job growth, with who's coming here, I mean, you have, you know, the growth behind the NSA and you have Amazon coming in, you have ADT. I mean, you have a lot of really great jobs here that most markets in the southeast don't have the diversity of the jobs that are here. And so there's, unless you're focused and really studying the demographics and all the markets in the southeast, Augusta gets overlooked. And I think that's going to change. I think Augusta is kind of the next growing market and has a lot of good things going for it. And we're excited to be part of that.
As you know, and all of us do, apartments are kind of a taboo at times for people to talk about and discuss. But in this case, with everything that's already there, there's no question this property, the highest and best use in my mind is for the additional apartments.
Right.
Why'd you sell the other apartments?
In Gainesville?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was, you know, unfortunately, our partner wanted to sell that one. We actually tried to buy them out. Our partner in this, in our two investments, we actually bought this with a sister property. They're, we're long-term. And so our goal is, you know, when we build properties, we build the right thing to hold long-term. We're about to break ground on a big property to build two hundred and seventy units down in New Orleans in the Metairie Market. And we are, we're capitalized to own that forever. We've, we're building it and the quality is there. So everything we do is for a long-term hold. You know, there's some things you can't control, some things that are out of our control. But I'd say the majority of what we own is and will be long-term hold.
I hear what you're saying, but I don't think anything's forever. And I've already heard the term flip in conversations, telling me that you bought and flipped one in Gainesville in four years. So I don't think anything's forever. I'm not sure I believe that. The other thing, I want to ask a question about the thirty, you made a comment about the thirty-year tax credits and you said that they're fifteen, at fifteen years, they can come off.
Right.
Is that where we are with this property here? We're at the fifteen-year mark?
Yeah, well, that's already passed. So that was a couple of years ago. So there are thirty-year tax credits, originally set up as thirty-year tax credits, but there's a, they can, not to get down into the weeds of it, but the person or the company or the investor, whoever actually is getting that tax credit, can take the benefit over fifteen years. And then there's a process called the qualified contract period. And so for a year, that property was up on the DCA, the Georgia DCA website to potentially be held back. Somebody could have come in and there could have been this type of transaction, which gets pretty granular, where somebody could have kept it in the tax credits. If the tax credits were more valuable than the real estate is as a market rate. So there's a year-long period and then once no one buys that, that's the one, it's up for a year. So after that year, it is then removed from the tax credits. So there's a three-year de-control period. So you receive an official letter from the Housing Authority where as of that date for the next three years, no one can be evicted for their, you know, having too low of rent. You're still, anyone that lives there from that date before is restricted. But as soon as someone moves out because they're leaving town or because they want to move somewhere else, that specific unit becomes market rate.
Let's say it's ten years left on the thirty-year. You sell it, can someone back, come back in and recapture those ten years?
No, 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 so I'm sorry. So at fifteen years, once you get that letter, it's done.
Done, can't be.
It is.
There's no balance due on it.
No, because off of the land, the lurk, the land use restriction covenant is on title until that fifteen-year period, then you're through the qualified contract period, then it is off the title and the restrictions are gone forever.
So the folks that, we had two people that applied for DCA credits.
Yes.
Could they have come in and bought this property in the year that it was with DCA? As opposed to coming in with two other sites and proposing those to DCA? Is that the way that would work?
I would think so.
It's, it's a.
Probably not from a financial standpoint.
Right.
It doesn't make sense, but that's probably why they did it.
Yeah, they would have to pay, the, to keep it in the tax credit, they would have to pay too high of a price. So it didn't make sense for them financially to then go buy it, invest the dollars they need to and then, and then hold it for another fifteen to thirty years.
Yeah.
Did y'all bought that in January and you did background checks with victims? What happens if they get a background check?
And a victim for rent.
You, yeah, you can, so there are a couple of different things. So you have to be a good quality resident. So there are rules that, you know, if you're not, you know, if you're playing music and beating on the walls of your neighbor and you're doing a bunch of things that disrupts the property, that's against the property rules. If you're throwing your trash on the ground, if you're not paying your rent on time. Those are, those are items you can use to evict someone because you can make it a nice community. And the Housing Authority wants this property, even as, when it was a tax credit property, if they had the right management in there, they could have, you know, potentially held, you know, made it where it was a quality, quality property. And so there are, you know, things. The only restriction is you cannot push them out or evict or push their rental rates higher than what is the max allowable rent with the Housing Authority.
I can, and I can tell you that, that I've known Clay Whittle a long time and when he calls me, he doesn't get excited about much unless he's arresting folks or finding people. But, but he was excited about this project and I think the main reason was in the three and a half months or so they've been in there, the calls have gone down, his call volume has gone down a full fifty percent. And he wanted to make sure that we understood that. And I think you all had given him some kind of a letter of your intent and I know he's talked to Dempsey and myself and given his endorsement to the project, which is uncommon when you have the word apartment in something and not, I just wanted to make sure that was in the conversation here.
So the, the rules you're talking about for the tenants, is that kind of, that's in the lease agreement, I suppose? Like I'm going to rent from you and you're going to kind of go over, you know, this, this and this will cause us to terminate your lease because?
Correct.
Kind of like a covenants almost type.
That's right. And so you have to, you can't go in there day one and do it all, so it's all on renewal. So when, if someone signed a lease in, you know, before October of last year, we then re-qualify them in October of this year. So we can't go midway through their lease because that is a contract.
It's just when their term expires.
That's right.
Gentlemen, do you have any other questions?
One other question. Am I correct in saying that in April of twenty-two, the lease runs out on the three-year mark?
That is correct. Yes, that is correct. So it is.
Then it's done and over with.
It is done and over with, even if we don't want to get rid of it. No, no one can stop that from happening. That is.
Okay. The courtesy officer question, you mentioned, you know, lower rent rates for law enforcement officers so that you have a vehicle there. Is there anybody else that's the only method that your courtesy officers are? Or do you have a?
I mean, that is one thing we do. I mean, we.
That's the source of that position?
That is a common thing that we do across our portfolio. You know, we, you know, right now, we can afford to have a courtesy officer on there because it's one hundred and ninety-two units and can only afford giving up so much. But if we're able to turn this into a four-hundred-unit property, there could be two or three. So, you know, you can, you can make it more efficient, you can, you can do a lot more things.
There's not going to be an employee per se of Audubon?
No, no, we.
Courtesy officer.
If, if the crime was really bad, we would hire full-time security to clean it up or we would, we do, going above, we would go above and beyond for specific.
You shouldn't have had that with the rent rates you're talking about.
When the structure, you know, we've done this enough where we've, we come in and we have a pretty good structure with the staff that, that we're able to really, you know, I didn't know that stat about the calls down so much, but, but that's really what we strive to do is focus on, you know, get out ahead of all the problems, like work with the residents. And come, when you call, if a resident calls us, we're going to go talk to you. We're not going to sit back and a lot of, you know, the seller was based out of Florida and they'd owned it for fifteen years and, you know, they didn't have a local presence. And so they didn't have as much hands-on, you know, hands-on management as we have and as we like to have. So, you know, I think our proactiveness eliminates a lot of, a lot of things to where we, where we can't have a courtesy officer or two there and that's more than enough. But if something were to arise next month, we would get out ahead of it and, you know, spend extra, get more security or whatever needed.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Thank you, just we may ask you to come back up. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Yes, my name's Jacob Gray. I live at forty-two hundred Washington Road, directly connected to this property. And it's not really so much speaking for or against, just I guess my question would be, I don't know if it's already stated, if there would be some sort of provision or clause that would, I guess, keep these proposed apartments from devolving back into, I'm not sure what the right terminology is, lower-income housing or tax credit?
There is a letter that I've seen that states something to that effect that was sent to the sheriff. You all have that letter?
We do not. So if one exists, I do not have it. Now, that's something applicants, you know, willing to state if that's what the letter indicates. I'm not sure.
Let me answer, I'm sorry.
That's fine.
Let me answer the question like this. When they invest the kind of money they're talking about investing, it's much to their benefit not to let it go backwards. And that's where your safety net is, the money they got involved. That's my opinion anyway.
Okay. Would you like me to read the letter that Sheriff Whittle shared with me?
If you want to enter into the record, that would be fine.
This is a letter from Audubon and this was forwarded to me by Sheriff Whittle on Monday. Forgive me if I stumbled through it. Dear Sheriff Clay Whittle and Columbia County Board of Commissioners, please take this formal letter as a notice and promise to deliver on the below-outlined project in its full capacity. Audubon is a multifamily investment and management company located in Atlanta, Georgia that is seeking consideration of rezoning plus or minus fifteen point four-four acres at a property located at forty-two oh four Washington Road in Evans, Georgia. The current zoning is R two and the request to change zoning to PRD. It's a planned residential development. Audubon recently acquired the Belmont, formerly known as Saddle Creek on Washington, totaling one hundred and ninety-two apartment units in Evans, Georgia for twenty-eight point four million dollars. The Belmont was built in two thousand four as a tax credit restricted property and sits directly adjacent to the land requested for rezoning. These tax credit restrictions were removed in May of twenty nineteen and the de-control period began at that time. The de-control period is a three-year period that restricts the owner from removing the legacy tax credit residents from their units. from removing the legacy tax credit residents from their units without cause. If those residents move out, their specific unit is removed from the restrictions and can be leased at the market rental rate. Since May of two thousand and nineteen, over fifty percent of the units have converted to market and have received interior renovations. The goal is to completely transition the Belmont from a tired tax credit property to a top, a new top-line luxury apartment community. Audubon will invest nearly one point five million dollars into the property in addition to the nearly two million dollars that has been invested in the property since May of two thousand and nineteen. These renovations will include updated landscape, hardscape, new grill station amenities, full interior upgrades, including new granite countertops, stainless steel appliances, luxury plank flooring, new modern-style window blinds and new paint. All units become de-controlled in April, two thousand and twenty-two. The current rental rates for the restricted units are around eight hundred ninety dollars. Upon renovation, these units are being increased to the rental rate of over twelve hundred dollars. The combination of the renovation and new rental rates will have a dramatic effect on the surrounding area and attracted demographic as the property will be perceived as a top-tier community in Evans. Sincerely, Joe Bowling and Miles Cunningham. So I don't see anything that specifically states you would never go back, but I don't know what the financial incentive with would be after that investment. Either one of you gentlemen care to expand on that?
Yeah, I mean, I, I, our total investment in, in the property would be roughly eighty million dollars with, with building phase two. You know, we're incentivized, we're, our, our business, our livelihood is, is made on successful investments. Um, you know, we, we employ a hundred and fifty people across our, our company. And, you know, we have to make good investments and, and we can't. If, if this property were to go back, which it can't and it won't, um, then we would, we'd be unsuccessful and we, we'd be out of business. And we've been, our firm was founded in two thousand and three, so we have a long track record of, of making good decisions and making good investments. Um, so, you know, it, it's not to say impossible. I mean, I don't want to say words that, that kind of stick and, and are, aren't, aren't gonna stay. But it is, it is hi, very, very, very highly unlikely for anything to, at this property to go back to, to the way it was or, or in a state of disrepair or.
You already own the existing location and it appears you've already made the upgrades or started the upgrade process. Was your investment plan predicated on the additional two hundred units?
No, no, it, we, we had a thought, you know, our, our thought was, hey, you know, this is a great site. If this, if this parcel ever wants to get developed, we're probably the most likely group to do that. Us are the next, you know, some owner of the apartments. Um, and so we bought it and, and we're bringing it from a, you know, a C or a D property to a B, B-plus. Um, and so that's our business plan. And, and we're happy with it. We'll clean it up. The crime will go away. The issues will go away. Um, but if we're able to build the second phase, it will bring the existing site up as well as that. So we'll take this from a, you know, C to a D, from C or D what it was. Um, currently, we're going to a B-plus. And then all of it will turn into an A-plus, uh, if we're able to do this. So it doesn't, it wasn't, we didn't have to have it, but it helps. Um, it helps the existing site.
And what's your, what's your plan as it relates to the traffic? That two hundred additional units at a hundred and, at one point five parking spots per unit? Three hundred and twenty-four, thanks. Excuse me. I mean, you know, turning, turning left's gonna be impossible under its current condition. Um, I would debate, but he coming out of there, just turns right and goes all the way down and circles back around. Um, you know, how do you, how do you propose to, to?
Well, obviously, any, any applicable, uh, traffic impact study, um, that may be, may have been a condition of, of their approval as well. We'll, we'll, we'll obviously consult the engineers. Uh, personally, um, my background is civil engineering and, um, I believe the average daily traffic on Washington Road is about thirty-one thousand cars average per day. One and a half spots per, per two hundred. Not all two hundred are gonna be occupied at all times and just assume one car per two hundred. Not all of those are gonna be hitting the peak hour, peak hours at the same time. So we really think that impact will be less than one percent of what it currently is.
Is, is working out something on Legion Drive so you can use that as a second ingress access? Is, other than just for emergency, is that, is that something that, that you see would be beneficial to this? Or, or would you rather not have a, a second entrance and exit that you have to monitor?
We want to be respectful to, to our neighbors. So if at all possible, uh, Washington Road is obviously preferred. Uh, if we need to, you know, contribute to improving Legion Road to, to help with traffic, we can do that as well.
By improving, you mean repaving it?
We could, we could consider that. We could partner with the county, of course.
You just said you want to be a good neighbor and you.
I'd be a pretty good neighbor.
There's a lot of neighbors over here.
All right. Gentlemen, any other questions?
Think your payback is on this?
Uh, you know, we, I mean, the way we're looking at it is, is a couple of different ways. There's a couple of different metrics that, that we look, um, we kind of underwrite properties to. Specifically, the return on cost is about a six point seven as it, as it's currently underwritten. Uh, the IRR, the internal rate of return is about a twenty. That's over, um, you know, and then we also have kind of a cash-on-cash return. So we have a bunch of different metrics. Um, but, you know, you're taking in leverage, so you, we'll go get a loan. We, we, our current lender is Wells Fargo, uh, on the current phase and we'll likely bring Wells Fargo in on the second.
Questions?
I want to make one comment to Mr. Gray. Mr. Gray, the money they're investing as your neighbor will be beneficial to you and your property. And I'm very familiar with it and I know your whole family, as you know. But I think it's gonna be a benefit to you.
Thanks, sir. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to take.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve RZ twenty-one dash four dash, excuse me, oh-five with conditions.
Do we hear a second? Yeah, I'll second from the chair for discussion. Gentlemen, thoughts?
There's a lot more factors involved. Wetlands have to weigh into it. Traffic's an issue. Someone's brought up the red-tailed hawk, but I'm sure that's gonna come down the road. Obviously, these guys do good work. I just looked, I'm from Baton Rouge. I just looked up your property in White Oak. I'm familiar with that area. So, um, you know, but I think there's more factors involved.
Gentlemen? You know, I, I, again, uh, not to belabor the point, but, uh, with the sheriff calling up, and again, this is, he expends a lot of man-hours, uh, and a lot of budget in this particular development. And, and I've got to wonder, you know, are, are we being, you know, again, I know, I know the stigma that apartments carry. But with him coming forward and telling us what, what this has done for the community already, are we better serving our community and taxpayers and our families that, that live here by removing something that's been somewhat of an eyesore? That, that's, that's one of my main, main thoughts.
But the future calls either. Payback is fairly quick for that. Up in Gainesville, this and doubling the problem. Might have a short-term gain for a long-term.
But let's say somebody buys that property.
There's gonna be so much money invested until it's not gonna qualify.
Well, if, if somebody invested that kind of money, would they come in and let it slide backwards?
It'd be cut their own throat.
Yes. And again, that's a lot bigger number than I ever deal with.
Also depends that.
Well, you don't know what anybody could be. Some of these builders we've got in Columbia County are being solid if things keep going the way they are. So we can't say what the future's gonna, gonna hold in fifteen years. One other thought, too, with the conditions, the staff has done and they've done a good job with it. If we vote to approve or deny, and then they don't meet the conditions, it's all a moot point anyway. Those conditions, if you look at them closely, cover a lot of what some of the question marks are.
I don't think we got enough answers around that. What are, tough, bigger issue? What happens at that?
What, water?
Water, I mean.
Oh, they're gonna.
Their exit is like it's gonna go over.
Oh, that'll be addressed when they put, when they submit the plan, the engineer.
Up it up.
Like any other.
I'm still the new boy on campus, but you know, I've seen a lot of these things. They come back and all of a sudden.
But that's not up to us. That's up to the, to the department when it's.
And, and one of the conditions that was, you know, in the, in the, uh, staff report did indicate that it was anticipated that, you know, it looked like the clubhouse area on the, the, the second phase, one that's subject up to the rezoning here, most likely would have relocated in some manner or shape. There's gonna be, you know, assuming that the rezoning, you know, works its way through the process and they move forward with the plan, there's a number of, uh, studies and, and site constraints that they're gonna have to address, uh, you know, as part of the countywide staff review. Things like the traffic were, you know, discussed and comments were made to that extent. It's one of the reasons why the, the Legion Drive access has been in place because of the fire requirements. Um, you know, floodplain and stormwater had some concerns about the existing conditions on the site and concerns that maybe that the maps were not entirely on the ground as accurate as what they believe that they may be on that site. So again, there's, there's some wiggle room for that plan to be adjusted slightly. It's part of the reason why, is one of the conditions was to bring it back to the planning commission for final approval, should it, should we get to that stage because you anticipate a minor, you know, juggling around of that. One of the things that may happen as a result, that they may not get all the units that they were requesting. I mean, there's a, there's a limited amount of developable area on that property. And at this stage, they haven't done enough of that engineering work to confirm that yes or no, this can be entirely built as is.
We're not capturing, we're not capturing a small space and putting an additional one or two buildings. We're more than doubling an existing site.
Absolutely.
I mean, I, I could, I almost could, could, uh, see, you know, maybe these three in the corner over here or something to that effect. I was like, hey, we're expanding. Not, this isn't expansion. This is like, this is a second location altogether.
Is the blue on the map around Reed Creek, i- is that hundred-year floodplain? Or is that just designated wetland?
There's another slide that's.
That, that's floodplain, I believe.
Is that a hundred-year floodplain?
I think, I think by and large through here, kinda, yeah, maybe not quite that far, but.
You know, I.
I have bigger fingers.
I'm gonna summarize my thoughts by saying this. I think what we need to do is vote it and let our professional staff make their decisions. And that would be answering the questions that we all have up here. And if they don't qualify, they don't qualify. But at least let them make an effort and let, that's what we pay all these people for, engineering department included. That's not for us to decide.
What, what other? What other use would you see for the property?
It's the highest and most professional use, what we're talking about. There is no more, I can't see it useful for anything but that. That's the, and you know what the rule says, highest in professional use for X property. And that's what this is, I think.
Here's, here's where I'm at. I think what they're doing with the, the one you've got is wonderful and I appreciate that. Cause that, that thing's been a thorn in all of our sides. I don't expect you not to do with the phase two what you say you're gonna do and then that's not gonna be a quality property. The thing that I'm seeing, I'm, I'm hung up on is that one-way in and one-way out for that many units, four hundred and eight units. We're telling our local developers, when they bring us a plan, to, to connect to other neighborhoods so there's other ways in and out. And we're leaning on our local guys to put stub-outs where a, a neighborhood may be going in the future. And we're asking all this of our local developers for good reason. You know, we, we want to flow those cars as many ways as possible to, to reduce, you know, congestion and, and accident safety. And the fact that, you know, we don't have that available to us. And I know y'all have got this issue with this road that God knows who actually owns it, maybe Columbus.
But if they don't qualify for that, then that, that.
That, that's where I'm at. That's where I'm hung up. There's nothing against apartments. It's not against the fact that you may sell it in three years. That, you know, or what, any of that for me. The, the problem for me is I would much rather see two ways in and out of there. Especially when we lean on our local developers, when they bring us three hundred-unit plaid or a fi- seven hundred-unit development and we're making, asking them to make other ways in and out to help reduce congestion.
But then at the same time, we let them overload sections of the county with traffic that's much worse than this.
On my time.
By approving subdivision.
I did not vote on those.
Does, does this, the, the emergency entrance in the back relieve the responsibility of having to sprinkle these units?
No.
No, uh-uh.
No, they'll have to be sprinkled.
They'll, they'll still have to be sprinkled. Yeah, the, the access, I think, is, is a, is a fire code requirement. I think that's part of it. Obviously, you know, if there's a mechanism by which they can gain more than just fire emergency access, that certainly would, I think, address some of the concerns that, that we've heard. Obviously, if there was a better connectivity plan, I think you would have already been presented that tonight. Um, you know, with the, the adjacent, uh, commercial property to the west, it's grade separated. It's kind of hard to make that connection. So again, there, there's a number of factors that are working against this. You know, obviously, it's got environmental issues that, uh, make it difficult to get back out. You know, punching back out to Washington Road, while yes, is an option, is not, not a real good one either. Uh, cause.
Do it.
Yeah, and, and you've got, you know, driveway separations. You've got, you know, uh, offset, um, driveway intersections with the opposite side of this road. It, you know, there's a lot of factors going on. There's, you know, a large volume of traffic that goes on. The, the constraints with this site are pretty real. Regardless of, you know, your, uh, your perspective on what the proposed use is or the proposed zoning is for this, um, again, if not this, then, then what other? You know, we've had some inquiries in the past and, and certainly the staff can, you know, enlighten you on some of those. You know, if this is a, you know, commercial or light industrial, they're not coming through the apartment complex as access to the site. So they're gonna have to go through wetlands. They're gonna have to go through floodplain. They're gonna have to try and get a driveway out onto Washington Road.
Would it be unreasonable to add a condition that the zoning is contingent upon access to Legion? That a condition that, that, that we as a group could add? Or is that something that would need to be done at the commission level if they saw fit?
You could add it. I, I guess the question is, is that? And you, you will have to answer the question to yourselves, uh, is that a, you know, is that a deal-breaking requirement? And you might want to ask them if they feel that's a deal-breaking requirement. I, I just, just because, you know, we don't have enough information to say, you know, yeah, it doesn't seem like it's gonna be that big a problem. We just gotta figure who the owner is. We gotta get them to agree, then make whatever necessary improvements. That may all still be able to happen. But if not, then is that what you hang this on? I, you know, that's, that's something you guys certainly could do.
I'm, I'm still not sure that that's not a county road because some of the maps show it. So that's one of the first questions that has to be answered. We've getting different comments and discussions about is it private or is it not?
Or we're being asked to vote yes to something, a lot of concerns.
I'm sorry.
We're getting at, you're, you're saying, let's go with it and we got all these concerns.
If all the conditions are met, that's the way the motion was said. So if the conditions aren't met, it's all a moot point. But if we vote it, which is what I made the motion for, and let our staff and our people make sure the conditions are met. If they don't meet all the conditions, then it won't work. Then they didn't meet the conditions, then they can't go forward. That's all I'm saying.
Do you amend your motion to include full and open access to Legion?
Yes, I'd be.
Would that be how we need to state that?
Uh, let me quickly just add. So whatever you decide, assuming you make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners tonight, that would not be heard by the Board of Commissioners until May fourth. May fourth, that would be the, the first available meeting for them to take this action on it. So that would buy staff, applicants, some additional time to maybe help try and resolve some of the outstanding concerns that they've heard here tonight prior to action by the Board of Commissioners, which may help them make a more, um, informed decision.
Okay. So the gentleman will amend his.
Yes, sir, I will.
Motion to include full and. Motion to include full and open access.
Yes, sir.
To Legion Drive based on what we found from staff? And my second hope is that how it needs to be worded?
Ken, yes.
Okay. I'm gonna have the other discussion.
One other question. Where are we going to to get the real answer to Legion Road?
Well.
How do we go about that?
Well, one, one place that obviously is the board of commissioners minutes, um, relates to, you know, when a, an acceptance of this would have occurred. Uh, we've done that. Um, we are not aware of a time in which it has occurred, so we'll continue to research that. I'm sure there's gonna, there's title research that can done that if, if some action had taken place, it should have been recorded at the courthouse. So we'll continue to, uh, see what we can find out. Sure the applicants have, uh, heard the same, so they can, uh, help, help in that regard.
Al, as long as you've been around, I figured you could tell them right where to go.
Sure you didn't do it, Al?
Can't answer. I, one thing though, I think there is a possibility of a regulation to do with if the county maintains and keeps up a road for a period of time, it becomes the county's. And that's one thought I have. And I'm not positive about that, but I'm pretty sure.
We'll confirm that with the county attorney, but I'm not sure he'll agree with you on that.
Cause there have been.
We do have, we do have a number of county maintained roads in the, in, you know, in the county that are not owned by the county.
Right, and then there were some that I'm, I'm.
This may be one of them.
I can't put my finger on it, but I'm sure over a period of time back when I was on the county commission, that came up, and I don't know why I'm saying that. After a period of years of the county maintaining it, I may be way off base with that.
Gentlemen, any other questions? All right, the motion's been made and seconded. All in favor of approval, please raise your right hand. All opposed? Okay, motion fails three, two. Mr. Butler, file RZ two one zero four zero six.
All right, this is a request for rezoning out of seventy, seventy-one sixty-one Moon Town Road on thirty-two point one three nine acres. Currently split zone RA and S one, uh, currently undeveloped, and the request is to rezone the entirety of the property to RA Resinshire Cultural. There's a location on the property on the east side of Moon Town Road. Also the zoning, we'll see in a moment. So the reason for this little S one piece there, uh, the Winfield Volunteer Fire Department back in two thousand and two needed a place to put a, uh, a limited use fire station. Uh, so that was brought forward and this was rezoned for that, never built. Uh, the owner is looking to subdivide some of the property now. Um, this one basically needs to go away for that to occur. And again, everything around it's zone RA already as well. There's aerial view of the site, also the existing site, the plat of the property. And in terms of future land use, everything out there is rural. Uh, again, RA meets that, that requirement. Uh, therefore, stat recommends approval of the request to RA. I conclude stat recommendation.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? All right. All right. Yes, ma'am, thank you. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the, the, uh, public hearing and accept a motion to, to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve file RZ two one zero four zero six rezoning from S one and RA to RA at seventy-one sixty-one Moon Town Road.
Go here a second.
Thank you.
Question? All in favor? Approved passes five, zero. Ms. Montgomery, conditional use for a car wash, uh, file RZ two one dash zero four dash zero seven.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a conditional use for a car wash at four eighty-nine Columbia Industrial Boulevard. This property is located on the east side of Columbia Industrial Boulevard, uh, just off Evans to Locks Road and is currently zoned M one light industrial. Uh, there's kind of a mix of zonings around this property, uh, quite a bit of industrial and a couple of S one special zonings for some churches. This is the aerial of the site and a photo of the existing site. And the applicant is requesting the conditional use to operate a vehicle restoration business from the property. Uh, they do offer titanium and graphene coatings, headlight restoration and interior reconditioning, as well as the detailing and the paint correction. Uh, under county code, car wash includes any facility with mechanical or hand operated equipment for cleaning, washing, polishing or waxing of motor vehicles. So the, the detailing and the restoration portion of the business fall under that definition. Uh, does require the conditional use to operate in M one, um, although it is listed as a light industrial use in the county code. Uh, there are several use provisions related to it that have to do with car washes that may be adjacent to residential property, which this property is not, so they do not directly apply. Uh, the property does have limited parking for storage of vehicles, um, but the applicant has submitted a letter from the adjacent church, uh, to the north here, uh, giving them permission to use some of that parking during the week for storage of vehicles, either a waiting service or a waiting pickup. Staff is comfortable with that, uh, during the day. Uh, we do have a condition that, that parking lot not be used for storage of vehicles overnight as there are use provisions related to overnight storage of vehicles that require some buffering and screening from rights of way. In terms of future land use, this property is within the Evans Town Center Activity Center, which is a mixed use activity center um, intended for shops, restaurants, hired into residential civic uses, et cetera. Uh, the subject parcel is in an existing primarily industrial area and the proposed car wash and vehicle repair use is in keeping with this development pattern. And staff is recommending approval with the condition that vehicles not be parked on the property at forty-two thirty-two Evans to Locks Road overnight.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? Okay, is the applicant here? Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? All right, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition RZ twenty-one oh four oh seven.
Go here a second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approved carries five, zero. Ms. Mystery, we've got a conditional use for a gym, file RZ two one dash zero four dash zero eight. Would you like to cover the variance and the variation at the same time, or do you wanna take those separately?
I can present them.
Present them one at a time and vote them separately.
Okay, would you, I mean, would you like to do the, the, the presentation for everything now, then, then take motions separately or just deal with them separately? Does it matter?
Deal with them separately.
Okay, got it. Okay, Ms. Mystery, file oh eight.
Yes, sir. This is, uh, a resort, rezoning which is a conditional use for a gym on seven oh five North Bel Air Road on two point zero acres. Current zoning is M two general industrial and it, the existing use is vacant. The request is for a conditional use for a gym to allow a new business, which is baseball and softball academy. Here's a site where you can see that it's, um, to the, um, east of North Bel Air Road. This is the zoning map that shows the, um, M two industrial area and it is kind of on the edge of the industrial park over there. Surrounding uses are other, uh, C two, C three commercial uses plus the P U D, which is the, um, uh, Performing Arts Center at the moment that's under construction. Here is the, uh, aerial of the property. Uh, this, this building was the former F L Smith Building, which they have now moved to another location. Um, the baseball, um, academy will want to reuse the existing building. Um, they will do some exterior, um, changes and that will be given on the variation. Um, the site will need improvements, additional parking, access, et cetera. Um, and this is the, the plat of the property showing the two acres. Here's a street views, so you can see that, um, there is some landscaping at the moment, which will remain and that will be added to for the, um, new business. And you can see the elevation on Bel Air Road and the, this is where the entrance area is as well. This uses in the, um, Evans Activity Center, which, um, covers multiple of commercial, uh, and industrial uses. And this is a use that's compatible with the surrounding uses with the Evans Town Park, and there's lots of outdoor activities for children, et cetera. And this will be, um, additional activity for, um, residents, um, especially when the weather isn't great. Kids can still, um, uh, work on their sports. So the staff recommendation is approval.
Gentlemen, any questions to staff? This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular project? Applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information?
Thank you, commissioners. My name is William Palladino.
Okay, would you spell your last name, please?
Uh, Palladino, P A L L A D I.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm an architect with Goodwin Mills in Haywood where it'd be Green Street. Uh, pretty much everything has been said. This, um, this and the two following variants and, uh, variation requests are all related to the, uh, due diligence, uh, of the sale of this property. Um, I am applying on behalf of the seller, but I am also the architect for the property. They are, uh, basically making sure that they can use the property for what their sale goes through. Uh, they are intent on creating a DBAT baseball and softball academy. I don't know if you're familiar with that, uh, uh, that company. But basically they, uh, offer baseball and softball instruction, uh, some other, um, uh, sports as well occasionally. But all, all the activity happens within the building. And really, uh, this is just, um, making sure that we can reuse the existing structure for.
And all the activities will be inside?
Correct. I mean, other than parking.
Right, okay. Gentlemen, any questions? All right, thank you, sir. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve file RZ two one zero four zero eight conditional use for a gym at seven oh five North Bel Air Road.
Go here a second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five, zero. All right, Ms. Mystery, let's go to the variance, two one zero four zero four.
Thank you, sir. This is for the same property on seven oh five North Bel Air Road. And the request is for a variance to code section ninety dash ninety-eight for list, list of lot and structure requirements. Again, just run through the slides. It's the location, the zoning and the aerial. He's applying the photos as well. So this, um, this plan shows the, uh, that North Bel Air Road is a collector road in the Evans Town Center. So the required front setbacks are a minimum of five feet and a maximum of ninety feet. Um, the, the G I S measurement on the map is about a hundred and twenty-five to thirty feet, which we're not sure because we don't have it as built up property. Um, and because our request is to reuse the existing building, the approval of the variance will allow the existing building to stay in the current location and, and be reused. Here's a site photographs. And so the staff is, uh, recommending approval with the following condition, that the variance to the required building setbacks applies only to the existing building.
Okay, any questions, gentlemen? Palladino, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
Just to say that, uh, I think the, uh, just to kinda clarify, the, the building itself is within, I think when we measured aerially, uh, because that measurement is taken from the center line of the road, we're within ten feet according to some not so specific aerial measurements, um, of where the building sits. So we're not too far off of the property line, or I'm sorry, the setback line. But the Evans Town Center District requires us to be right up on it. So this is kind of a just in case variance, uh, that the building is.
Thank you, sir. Uh, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman?
I did the last one.
All right, I'll do this one. Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve with conditions file VA twenty-one oh four, four, section ninety-nine. Setback requirements of town center, charge to exist.
Go here a second.
Second.
That's the longest motion I've ever heard you make.
I am a talkative man.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five, zero. Ms. Mystery, third, uh, the third strike here, variation to section ninety dash ninety-six, VA two one zero four zero six.
Yes, sir. This is a variation that applies for the same property and it's for ninety-nine six Evans Town Center Overlay District. And run through the same slides. We'll stop at this one. This is the elevation that's on Evans, um, sorry, North Bel Air Road. Um, and with the Evans Town Center Overlay District, there are some requirements for building materials, et cetera. Um, this is a, this was built as an industrial building, so there is, uh, metal panels on it. And there is a, a block base at the, at the bottom section, which is, um, going to be painted in a complementary color, um, according to the architects. And, um, there is going to be a landscape strip provided along Bel Air Road frontage, which will also kinda dress up that, that look with the, um, along the public right of way, and the, uh, applicants have agreed, agreed to that. And these are close up photographs that you can see, and you can see that the metal is actually in really good condition. Um, so, uh, I think it's a, a good idea to just reuse what we've got and make the most of it. So staff is recommending approval of the variation. And just to clarify, uh, the, the first two, um, items on this go to the VOC. The variation actually stops at this, this commission. So the recommendation is to approve with the following conditions. Landscape strip designed in collaboration with the Columbia County Landscape Architect shall be submitted for review to Columbia County Plan Review and installed prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy. And the base of the building should be painted a neutral complementary color such as a brick tone approved by planning department staff. Variation shall not apply to any new buildings constructed on the site. Existing and proposed mechanical units must be screened, meeting section ninety dash ninety-six.
Gentlemen, any questions? Okay, Mr. Palladino, do you have anything you'd like to add to this?
I don't think so. The only thing I would add is that, um, there would be a, uh, because of the construction of the existing building, changing the metal cladding to the building would be considerably difficult, uh, from constructability standpoint. It's an existing metal building construction. It's basically built to have that metal paneling on the outside, so if we were asked to change that, it would require some significant restructuring of the building.
Sure. Um, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this variation? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file VA two one zero four zero six. Variation is section ninety ninety-six to allow the existing metal siding to remain on the building.
Go here a second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries five, zero. Ms. Montgomery, we have a variance. We'll go to you this time, file VA two one zero four zero three.
Yes, sir. This is a request for a variance to section ninety dash one forty-four, placement of buildings and structures at seven thirty Houston Lake Drive. This property is in the Shoal Creek Development, um, off North Bel Air Road and is currently zoned R two, single family residential, as are all surrounding properties. Uh, this property is a corner lot and you can see the existing fence. Um, ironically, this is exactly how this fence came to staff's attention. Um, the applicants did submit a building permit to put a pool in the backyard. When, uh, staff pulled up the property during the review, it was noted that the fence appeared to be too close to Genie Bell Court. Um, with this being a corner lot, uh, it does have two road frontages and four single family residential districts. Um, when a fence is installed along a road frontage closer to the street than the building setback, it does have, um, height requirements. Uh, for a corner lot and on the front of the house, which would be facing Houston Lake Drive, it would have to be less than three feet. On the side, uh, on Genie Bell Court, it would have to be less than four feet. Um, this is a, a typical six foot privacy fence, um, so it would typically have to meet the, the building setback. Uh, so to show you the development plan, this is the, the applicant's proposal for the property, uh, developing the, the new pool. Um, there is a, a small retaining wall here, uh, that would be just inside the fence. Uh, the red line marks the, the minimum building line on the property, uh, which is, uh, roughly shown here. And you can see the fence is outside of that line. Uh, based on the applicant's measurements, uh, the fence currently sits approximately fifteen feet inside of the building setback. Uh, it is also fifteen feet outside of the right of way. And it is, uh, quite, quite a distance down from the, the actual intersection. So in this case, it, it doesn't really create a, a visibility concern. And staff is recommending approval. And staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Would you like to give us any additional information? All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Yes, I've got one question. What, what's the code on fences around swimming pools?
They are required to have a fence around the swimming pool.
Is there a height requirement?
That gentleman right over there knows. I think he's trying to say four feet.
Four, okay.
Minimum of four.
All right. Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Evening. My name is Fred McIntyre, 725 Houston Lake Drive. I'm the president of the Shoal Creek Homeowners Association. And we have no objection to the approval of the variance.
All right. Thank you, sir. All right. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve VA 210403.
Go here a second.
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. Butler, file VA 21-04-05.
Thank you. This is a request for a variance at 901 Big Oak Circle. Section 9053 lists lot and structure requirements. Reduce building setbacks for proposed pool and cabana. Currently zoned R2 RCO. Don't really see very often. This is on roads form. You can see the intersection of Big Oak Circle and River Bluff Trail. And everything around it is zoned R2 RCO. And also some R1 RCO over there as well. This is aerial view of the site. And also the existing site. This is the front of the property. And the plat, we're dealing with this property here. What we're looking at is the, a, a reduction in the setback off of this private alley here. You can see that's shown as a 10-foot MBL or AKA 20 feet from the center line of the private alley. Looking to reduce that down to five feet from the property line for the cabana and pool. This is alley access of the property, to kind of give you an idea of, it'll be in this area back here, kind of what the current state of the, of the area is. It shows the plan. Again, the, this shows the 10-foot, the 10-foot building, or the 10-foot MBL there. And you have the five foot that's shown on the lower side there. So again, they would encroach by five feet, but it is a, a cabana, you know, pretty small. I believe it's about 480 square feet, give or take. If they had it down to 400 square feet, they could build it today if they wanted to. And again, it shows the cabana representation of it. Again, the applicant has, so this is not a final plans or anything. Again, this kind of show you an idea of what this could look like. In terms of the private alley, again, this is an area where you're going to have, you, you're going to have quite, quite a few things. I mean, you do have garages, you have other pools. You know, it's an area where you have a lot of space for families to use. So again, putting a pool back here makes some sense. Again, you can see there's, there, again, not as close as this one, but again, they are in the backyards of these properties. This is the existing fence. One of the things that we, we do have a condition in regards to is keeping this fence in place, providing that, that separation between the private and the somewhat public, you know, as a private alley. It's important to staff and also to the applicant as well. So again, we do, we do have a recommendation of approval with conditions. One thing that the applicant has talked about, the first condition there, a fence or wall, should probably be a fence and/or wall. He may have both, providing that, that, that separation. So we would like to make that change to the condition. There is a second condition there, that he's been encroaching agreement is required. He should, he's already applied for that. Stormwater says going through their process. Should be on the same meeting as this one. That concludes staff recommendation.
I've got one question. I've, I've had some communication with a resident and they were under the impression that the fence may be moved. That's not involved in this in any way whatsoever.
No. And again, we have a condition that means it has to be there.
Just wanted to clarify that.
It would have to move to build, to build the.
Oh, sure. Yeah, absolutely.
Have to put it back.
Yeah, it has to, it has to go back. Correct.
Is the homeowners association involved with this at all?
So there's been conversations between the applicant and the HOA. They can go into that further if they would like. We don't have anything from the HOA directly. Cover that more if they would like to.
I have one concern. You go back to the, keep going back, one, right there. Okay. We're talking about going, we're, we're taking this to exactly the five foot mark. Tell me. Is that correct? I have been on, I've been out to properties and I've been on this commission during votes where we had, we literally had overhangs setback, not the building, the overhang. I think some, one resident had to buy a piece of property so he could get that. And then I'm looking at this right here and the overhang is in the setback. I mean, we're already set up for failure here.
No, it's not over failure. You can have an overhang in a setback.
That's not what happened on those other ones.
They were, there was a little bit more than overhangs and setbacks when the, the building was in there as well.
Some overhangs because they had to put different fireproof materials on them to.
That's right. I mean, I.
It was the building itself.
Think within five feet, it has to be fire rated. That's, that's the issue, that the encroachment isn't, isn't necessarily the issue at hand. How it's rated. And so they had to go back and make improvements to the actual structure itself.
Well, that makes sense.
Yeah.
But there was an issue where we had something in front of us several years ago where somebody had encroached over the core property and they had to cut the corner off the even house. But that's core.
Yeah, it was like last year.
I mean, I've seen, I, I've seen at least half a dozen come forward since I've been on this.
So, is the applicant here? Yes, sir. Please come forward and give us your name and home address. And if you could clarify the mud here, that would be awesome.
Hey, my name is Nick Wimpy. I live at 901 Big Oak Circle. I'm the homeowner. Just want to clarify things for some of my neighbors here. Some rumors in the neighborhood are that, you know, the structure's completely approved, but I want to get this part done before we take anything into HOA. And as far as you were, if I can address your question you asked about the overhang, if the overhang needs to move in enough, is that's a condition, you know, to make it five feet, ten inches or whatever it has to be to include that inside that five foot line, then I'm more willing to do that.
Well, I would, I mean, just from a standpoint that we, under the same topic, we had a guy, I think Will and I went out to go look at the property, the, the contractor messed it up. You know, the homeowner said, look, we were supposed to be here, but the guy got building it and all of a sudden we're, we're outside. I just think you, you don't want to, you don't want to cut your room for error down to, that's my opinion. And I'm just one guy of five.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
Well, it was the answer to.
Did they have to?
I think.
Move it up. You just, you just said, you just said it'll give you, it'll move it in.
Drop a plum ball.
Six, six to 10 inches.
Whatever it needs to be.
That's just my suggestion. It doesn't have any effect on, on, I just don't want you to be back here asking for another variance.
Okay, I understand.
Which could cause a change of material.
Right. Gentlemen.
Oh, yeah. And the fence, like you said, the fence was to be six foot. Or maybe on top of a small retaining wall. If you go through that, we'll get that done with the HOA.
Fence will be on top of a small retaining wall?
It'll be six foot above the retaining wall? Or it'd be a total of six foot?
Depends on the final plans. Be enough to meet the code.
You're going to have a retaining wall inside the six foot fence?
No, no, no. That will be part of it.
Let's let the boss come up here.
He clearly is going to explain this.
Yeah. Just give us your name and home address.
Michelle Wimpy, 901 Big Oak Circle. So it could be the.
And, and you can draw on that if you want to, if that would help you. Tell us where the retaining wall is going to be.
Oh, it'll be, so like the fence and the retaining wall. Like the fence might sit on the retaining wall, but it won't be over the six.
Okay, so six foot will be the maximum height regardless of how tall each are. Okay.
And a retaining wall, I guess, will be a function of the pool process, if in case they have to level the lot.
Okay. Okay, got it. As long as you don't exceed six feet. Good to go. All right, thank you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Yes, sir. Please come forward, give us your name and home address.
Evening. Thank you. Nathan Locke, 2835 Towering. I'm the president of the. Just like upon reviewing Wimpy's application to the county to make a correction, page eight, section five specifically, states that incorrectly that I said the board would approve if the county approved. Not true. So I'd just like to have that part struck and not part of the consideration.
But the POA is still undecided.
We, we have received nothing from them yet. So this would have no bearing on our decision.
Ladies, gentlemen, can y'all make that amendment to the narrative?
Are you talking about the staff report? Or which, which part are you talking about? Is it about the application itself and the staff report?
Sir, this is. Page eight, section five, I can.
Okay, so it's applicable. Gotcha.
Go pathetic?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, got it. Thank you, sir. And yes, ma'am, would you like to come forward? You don't have to. I saw you raise your hand. But please come forward and, and address us as opposed to speaking to, to the folks in the, in the, in the gallery, if you don't mind. Yes, ma'am. Please come to the microphone if you'd like to ask a question. Give us your name and home address. These, these meetings are recorded and I'd like for Care to be able to understand everybody.
Helen Morgan, 6504 River Bluff Trail. I just wanted to know where his existing fence is.
Pull up an overhead, please, and, and let's.
Oh, I know where it is. I look at it every day. I want to know what, how, how, how far in.
It's not going to move.
Not moving. Oh, okay.
The only thing they'll do is, is if they need access to the backyard, they'll remove it to get access, but they'll have to put it back in the same position.
Okay. And I guess that doesn't, what's the building of the, of the building, what material is that?
Of the.
The cabana. What's the back of the cabana made of?
Mr. Wimpy? Is it going to be an open air cabana? Are you going to have sides on it? Are you going to have bamboo or, please?
Backside, we have a brick wall. We haven't submitted anything yet to the HOA because we want to make sure we get this first because it could, because redesign.
Okay, so get with your, your property association.
Is there an HOA and a?
This is just a hypothetical view because I'm not going to, as we know, HOA, the roads farm is very strict. HOA standards. I want to make sure this is done correctly first.
Probably got some in their covenants.
Just covenants and there's a ton of them in there.
Light materials of the same.
Yeah. So it would match our house identical, some overhangs and bricks and all that. So it'd be the same design style as my house. Obviously, I have a full detailed plan to send, submit to the HOA after we know five or 10 feet.
Thank you. I'd get with Mr. Lot and, and he can probably help you. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak either for or against? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and give us your name and home address.
I'm Leanna Maynard from 307 John's Way.
And would you spell your last name, please?
M-A-Y-N-A-R-D. And it's not a before or against. It's actually just a, a question from my understanding, since I'm on the, the board of the Property Owners Association. So what I want to understand is, is since we, I live next door on the alley, we have a lot of alleys in the neighborhood and this would be, as far as I know, the first kind of variance request that's been made to push back closer the alley. So I'm wondering, is this, is this a specific decision that's being made because of their particular lot? You know, because it's a corner lot and it's got the, the two different frontages basically to it, you know, kind of pushing them into doing this? Or is this something that would then be applicable to every alley lot?
Just this one particular instance, if somebody else wanted it, they're more than, 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 than able to come forward to this body. We see these kind of things quite often in the county. A lot, a lot of times on smaller lots when people are, are trying to, to, to come up with amenities in their backyards.
Right. Right. So just thinking in terms of, you know, like the future of the neighborhood and like the alley goes from kind of feeling like this to feeling like this if everybody.
Right.
So it's, there's no sense, so there's a sense that this is like a special case. This is not going to be the new precedent for what you do on an alley lot.
This is a case basis.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
So going into that though, one, one thing with that, can you go to the overhead view of the neighborhood? This act, this here actually had a minor waiver that was done for it, which is a, almost a variance, but not quite. So there's already been some things that have been done that have not necessarily established anything, but have already gone through.
All right. With that being said, I'm going to close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions file VA 210405, variance to section 90-53 to reduce the setback along the alley to five feet for the property at 901 Big Oak Circle.
Go here a second.
Quick question. With, is that a revised condition saying a fence and/or wall?
Correct.
Yeah, just making sure.
Yes, are you amending? Go here a second.
Amending your motion?
I made my motion to include and/or wall or fence.
Right. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All right. Seconds still hold?
Seconds still hold.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries five zero. And I've lost my agenda.
That's all right. You're at the end.
I know I'm at the end. I just don't want to do it wrong. I don't want to disappoint y'all.
No tax amendments, no legal matters.
Yeah. Do we have any staff or commissioner comments? Any public comments? All our public's running out on this here.
There's a fire in the, there's a fire out there.
All right. I guess the time to adjourn is upon us. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Go move.
Go here a second.
Thank you, sir.
Any discussion?
Bear me out.
All in favor?
Pleasure.
Motion to adjourn passes.
You got you.
Got you. Five zero at 7:46 PM.
The longest.